Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Today is November 8th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. At this time, I would please ask everyone to rise, say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next day for leading us. Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda. It's good with it. I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda for today.
Move in second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. We'll get right on down to our agenda item. Our next item is an action item. These are claims, border and junior college. Casey, come on up.
I had a couple of questions. I tried to have a couple of answers.
The way this thing rolls. Leave myself a little load that takes forever.
The same issue.
A late fee on Wex Bank? Why are we paying late fees?
It's the show credit card that the sheriff's office was using for waterways to buy fuel. And when we had that gap, when you guys were all at conference and we didn't pay claims at the end of September, that bill didn't get paid, and so they assessed us a late charge. The sheriff called them and tried to get them to remove it, but they wouldn't. So that has actually been closed, that card. And they're going to start purchasing fuel from the road department. So that card will no longer be an issue anymore.
I leave myself note, but this thing's so... What is Spyglass? Contingency consulting fee for monthly service.
That's the company that we utilized, Commissioner Moplin, to identify any bills that were overpaying. And they did find some accounts that we were overpaying. So that was the cost of their results that they found.
So that's just like a one-time payment for that program?
Correct, correct.
Do we get like a copy of that?
We do.
Oh, good.
And then I see that we're still paying water and power, and it says search and rescue. The old blue building?
It's a monthly minimum.
There's a monthly minimum that's required to pay. So if you look, it's only like $5.19 a month. But that's to, you know, keep having that service. It would cost more than that if they were to, if we were to turn it off and they were to come back out and turn it back on. And so we just keep maintaining it.
So water is $75.65 a month. So we're paying, you know, $80 a month for a building that we will never have it, you know, use again because that thing's going to come down. So I'm questioning why we continue to pay utilities on a building that I don't think is ever going to be used again.
You know, that would, we'd have to look into that because I think even if it was a bare lot and had a city hookup, you would still have to pay the minimum.
That's my...
There's a vacant lot charged for the, one of the vacant lots that we have. I think it's like $30 a month.
Thirty-eight fifty. So that was my next question. The vacant lot, is that the one that's over there with the garage on it?
I'm not sure what properties are exactly or what. But I'm sure Scott would know. Or Douglas knows.
You could get on GIS probably, find out which one it is.
I think the only vacant lots we have in City Limits. We just bought the one, so we'll end up starting incurring that one. Oh, the one beside YCAB.
Correct.
Next to YCAB.
So we'll need to look at that come spring and figure out, you know, what, which ones we're going to use where. So we're not paying for something we're not utilizing.
Casey, I had a question too on code red. We have two separate bills. One's 1232, and I can't find the other one. It's like $4,000. Its total was around $6,200. Do you remember off the top of your head?
Um...
For code red.
I saw those charges in there. I didn't enter them. So I imagine that they were for two separate uses of code red. I didn't question the sheriff about it.
Yeah, that's the annual, the annual fee for that program.
But how come it's billed in two separate bills?
Let me see if I can look it through.
There's one under general fund, under communications, and one under sheriff. And I just wondered why they're not together. Sixty-one, sixty-one is what the total is. Sixty-one, sixty-two. And I think that's about what it's spent every year, isn't it?
Correct.
But hasn't started going up?
Not that I saw.
Remember, that was kind of a temporary thing until we see how it worked. I think everybody really likes it. I think we should continue. I just wondered why it was billed separately. Oh, yeah, under Parks and Rec, the Mogul Master Snow Groomer for $49,850. That's a total grant, correct?
That's correct. We will get reimbursed once the commissioners, if they do sign the action item that's on the Parks and Recreation presentation today.
Oh, that's for the drag.
That's correct.
And that was done, and it just goes right back into that same line item as that.
It will go into a revenue line item for grants.
Okay, any more questions for Casey? Sound an entertaining motion. We have one junior college.
Yes.
I move that we approve the claims, border to claims, and one junior college tuition.
I'll second that.
Move in second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. Oh, that's right.
On that remaining cash, so Doug, while we're on bills. So the infrastructure bill was approved, which means our SRS funding is approved for three years in the road department. And that is unbudgeted income. So are we going to have to open?
Well, we budgeted for revenue or SRS in the amount of...
Sure, I think you mentioned that last time, but you know what the annual amount is?
$900,000 is what we budgeted for.
So with this approval, I can't remember if it's 1.365 or 1.635. Been a while since I've actually seen the number. But that's a three-year allocation as soon as that's signed. And it is allocated for '21, '22, and '23. So I just was curious how we would bring that in.
Yeah, we did budget for it.
So if we get more than the $900,000, because that's a straight payment. That's, we don't have to split it with school district.
Okay.
And I think actually there's some additional funding coming for the Pilt counties. And they haven't released that out of treasury yet, how much that is. So we have some additional funding. I want to say it's 1.65. Maybe that's the first one.
There you go.
Okay, thank you, Casey. Have a great day. We're going to move right on down our next agenda items. These are elected official reports and discussion. First one up is June Fulmer. And Sue Lieber is here.
Hi, I'm filling in for June today. So we don't have a lot to report, other than the appraisers are very busy building, fielding their building permits. The county has issued a little over 400 permits. City of Cascade has issued 72, and McCall has issued 225 up to date for the year. These numbers actually I acquired last week, so they could be just a few off.
And that's, Sue, that's for, since October?
No, that's for the whole year.
For the whole year.
Of '21.
Okay.
And at least over 50% of those are actual houses. So pretty crazy year. Our front office girls, we sent to PTR training down at the State Tax Commission this morning. And that's that circuit breaker program for elderly and disabled folks. So they're getting trained. Kathy is going to be taking a basic mapping class, November 15th through the 19th for her deed processing certification. And Meg continues to train Trina, and things are going very well in the DMB.
And you guys are still open nine to three on Friday?
I believe so. But do you have any questions for us?
Guess not.
Okay.
Great job.
Have a great day, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning, Doug.
First, we'll just kind of give you an overview of what's been taking place with the clerk's office. First off, we do have two courts running today, District Court and Magistrate Court. So we do have a heavy day with the courts. Judge Scott is here in person because he does have some sentencings that are taking place this morning. And I believe the prosecuting attorney is there, he is there, conducting sentencings. So today is a heavy day for court. We are also in the clerk's office still conducting annual reports to be submitted to different agencies. We'll be working on the Idaho Department of Transportation Annual Financial Report, Street and Financial Report. We'll be working with Jeff and Mickey on that. We have the snow grooming report that's due, the waterways grooming report that's due, the trial court administrative report that is due, the juvenile probation report that is due. So we will be working with all of those departments to complete, conduct those annual reports. And then a lot of those will be coming before the commissioners for approval prior to them getting sent off, specifically the waterways, snow grooming, annual street financial report, the probation report. So all of those will be reviewed by our office and then submitted to the commissioners for final approval.
We get the levy rates back yet? Are they still?
We did, yes. We finally got the certified levies from the State Tax Commission. We have provided those to the treasurer's office. We did have some issues with the city of McCall, Payette Lake, Subur and Water, as well as... Excuse me, I have it written down. The McCall Fire Department. When we were conducting the assessable value for the urban renewal that had sunsetted, they, when we received the information from the assessor's office, they had not reduced it by 80%, which was required under the new code. So that information that was initially provided to the State Tax Commission was inaccurate. They did catch it, rectified it, and made the correction, which did impact the amount that the McCall, City of McCall could levy, the maximum amount that they could levy for on their general fund, by approximately $12,000. So we have notified the city of McCall that they have to reduce their general fund budget by $12,000. The issue with the fire department was not as drastic, and neither was the Payette Lake. But those adjustments have been made, and the taxing districts have been informed. This treasurer does in fact have the levy rates, the certified levy rates, and has begun entering them in. I'm assuming that the treasurer's office will provide you with a report of that. So as of right now, our work has concluded regarding the levies with the State Tax Commission and the treasurer's office.
You know, Doug, has the state posted those anywhere on a webpage?
I don't believe that they have yet, but we can research that and let the commissioners know.
Ask maybe the assessor, she should get it for me. Okay?
Any other questions regarding that? The elections, we had an election conducted on November 2nd. Commissioners, we are here this morning requesting that the commissioners canvass the ballots for the city of McCall, the city of Cascade, the city of Donley, and the Southern Valley County Recreation District. Our office is still conducting a canvas and an audit of the McCall-Donley School Board trustee zones, three and four. We did identify an issue in which we had some roads that were not correctly mapped on the election software. They were correctly mapped on our GIS map, but that information was inaccurately put into the election software. So our office is still conducting an audit. We are hoping to be completed with that audit today. And then we are going to be requesting the commissioners have a special meeting to canvass those votes, more than likely on Wednesday, or at the latest on Friday. So if you could bear with us, our office is still conducting a canvas and an audit of those McCall-Donley school zone trustee ballots. So I did send off this morning the canvas of the votes for the cities and for the Southern Valley County Recreation District. I can answer any questions, if you guys have any, regarding that, those elections.
Don't have any questions. It's just amazing the voter turnout. I think we had more folks for the rec district than we had both Donley, Cascade, and McCall. Those numbers were up a little bit, 35%, 23%, 21% in Donley, 17% in the rec district. There's a lot, a lot of people didn't vote. I don't know why. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the votes as canvassed.
Make the motion that we approve the votes as canvassed for the city of McCall, Donley, Cascade, and the South Valley Recreation District.
Move in second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. And then Doug, you'll just let us know on the school district.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Not at this time, commissioners. Thank you so much.
Thanks to your team. It was probably a long day on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm guessing Oak, you're up next.
Morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As Clerk Miller had reported to you earlier, it's a heavy court calendar today. Second Monday of the month, so obviously the court is here. And so Prosecutor Nagel sends his best regards and regrets for not being able to be here. Ashley, as you know, joined us earlier this month, and we will have her here to introduce herself more formally when we can get her out of the courtroom. I have a, I have a hearing scheduled at 10 o'clock, too. So I'll be brief and then up down there and take care of my hearing. Scheduled to be in magistrate court for conservative guardianship hearing. Sorry. Should know that. It should be the first thing I do when I stand up to the podium.
Are those in person or are they on Zoom?
Zoom, yeah. Courts reverted back to Zoom-type hearings, and those are, they're adequate to take care of the hearing responsibilities. But I think we're all looking forward to getting back to a more normal courtroom environment where we can appear in person and handle things the way that we're more accustomed to handling things. But the Zoom is working good. The technology's adequate and seems to be working fine. On the, on the civil side, continue to, continue to have a lot of, a lot of projects. And I'd like to get, I'd like to get ahead so I can work on a few things that will help the elected officials and department heads. A lot of the requests that I'm getting are for agreements, either contracts or MOUs, and a little bit of a guidance document and a cover sheet for department heads that they can review that. Kind of a checklist for the basics before they're submitted for legal review, I think will help both in terms of speeding things up on my end, but also being able to give some, some tools to the department heads on how to, how to kind of initially approach the companies that we're doing business with. So that is, that is on my list of things to do. But one of those projects that I need to, I need to get my, my list shortened before I can, I can get that out. But I am, I am certainly looking forward to doing that. I appreciate the fact that folks feel comfortable bringing these agreements to me. I think once we kind of look at all of them for the first time and clean up some of the things that, that I'd like to see changed, I think we'll have some, a little bit more of a routine process as we go forward. So I do, from time to time, have just some unplanned questions for legal advice that are time-sensitive, that I have to focus on. Public records is certainly one of them when we get a complicated one or a large request. We have really three working days and tan if we do an extension that, that requires some, some time. We, we are open, open for business, for the, for county, for county employees to come and see us. And so if they do have legal questions or concerns, certainly hope they don't hesitate to come and see us, even though we're busy. It's much better to work through and talk through some issues in a proactive way than try to, try to clean up a mess later. So the fact that we have a fairly heavy workload on both sides, the criminal and the civil side, shouldn't be a deterrent for county elected officials, department heads, or even just employees to come, come in and, and see us and work through or talk through some of their issues. So that's the report for now for prosecutor's office. And happy to answer any questions, if you've got any.
No questions, other than the statement that it's really nice to be have that open door policy. It's, you know, you think back how we did this six years ago or eight years ago to where we are now. And it's so cool to see how everything has elevated itself. Coming of age and everything, everywhere.
Sure.
It's really great. Great to see it.
Well, thank you all for the, for the support that you provide the prosecutor's office. And, and we'll continue to work hard on behalf of the citizens here in the, in the county.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Brian? Thank you. Good luck at your court case.
Have a good morning.
Yep, you too. Sheriff. Good morning.
Good morning.
We go from tall to short, to tall to short. Change.
So we, our, our new gal in the driver's license has had a full week last week, and we're excited to have her onboard. She's enthusiastic and really catching on fast.
So you're going to be back open on Fridays pretty quick?
Well, if we get another person.
Oh, you're still waiting for another one?
Right. We still have that other, it was part-time then full. But so, yeah, on Friday, the other, all of them were really busy catching up on some of their own other individual work that they had to get done. And it's, I know that that was a big load off of them, knowing that they finally had some other help coming in. So it's good. So we had Joan Hakunzi retired from dispatch, and another newer detention officer had decided to go back to his home state. So we do have three applications, I believe, in detention, so that will be good.
What about dispatch? Are we down three?
Dispatch. Yes. One in training, though, is doing an excellent job, too. So hopefully, she'll be on her own. We have someone, and then she is going to Detention Academy in December.
So she can do dispatch and detention, but do both? So she can do both?
No, she's going, she will be going to, no, the new in dispatch has been trainee, our trainee, she will go to the academy for communications in December.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so. Be good. Looking forward to the Highway 55 being open for the winter, so we don't get the long strings of traffic. So hopefully, it'll flow much better. We met Ashley from the prosecutor's office, came to one of our meetings, and we're happy to have her onboard, and she brings a lot of, you know, experience with her. And so it'll be good that their office will be able to, you know, spread out some of the work there. And I just wanted to report on Brian Oakey. He's been wonderful to work with. And my department has so many vendors that we work with and, and other partners from MOUs. And he's going through every one of those and fixing them the way they really need to read. And so we're pleased with that and he's onboard.
He's a good guy.
And once they, you know, once he gets those all tuned in, then it'll be easier on, on renewing each year. So we've kind of overburdened him with a few things. But it's great to have, you know, him available to help us out, so.
When's EOC?
Pardon me?
When is, when is dispatch going over to the EOC?
That will be December 6th, I think, is July. And they'll move a couple of stations, leave one in dispatch until they get those all set, and then they'll move the other one. But it should be within that day or two, so.
Is your new furniture coming and all that still online?
Yeah, it's been delayed a little bit, but I believe it's supposed to be here.
I think it'd be great if we could to do an open house, let the community come in and see something.
The open house is probably not going to be until we're open because of the, trying to get everything in there. So it might not be set up. So it'll be, it'll be probably after we...
If they're live, can you really let people in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So probably you're shooting towards the middle of December after it's open, something like that.
Probably like that. We'll, we'll get that date set.
It's just, I think people would be interested to see that. And I think it'd be a great reflection of what we're spending taxpayer dollars on, so.
Yeah, it'll be good.
He's a great idea. Any more questions? All right, thank you. Have a great day.
Have another office space to go in and refurbish.
Presser, Joanna.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm right in the middle of height here. Few updates from our office. We did receive the levies, and we calculated the preliminary batch of tax bills this morning, actually. So we're going through the review process. We'll still have a few more days before everything is final and we're ready to send off to the printer. The property that was up for the tax deed sale sold on Friday afternoon. So that agenda item will need to be canceled for this afternoon. And my chief deputy is leaving the treasurer's office. She's going to move to the planning and zoning office. So that position has been posted internally for now. And then the last thing, I have an action item for you. Tax cancellation request. I sent out materials this time for you to review. Do you have any questions about it?
Do you know, did this person, after he demolished it, did he build another house?
No, the property is vacant.
It's still vacant, okay. Everybody has that information, not canceled? The interest for a total of $1,159. I would entertain a motion to approve that tax cancellation.
I moved.
Move in second?
Seconded.
Move in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Your chief deputy, is that effective immediately or?
No, it'll be effective in mid-January.
Oh, okay. So she's going to be there until after tax drive?
After tax drive, thank goodness.
Thank you, Jody.
Yes.
Thank you, Zinda, for being patient. That was very, very nice. Yes, very helpful to the county.
All right. Anything else, Joanna?
No, I have everything.
All right. Have a great day.
You too.
Move on down to the department heads. And the first one is Annette, and she sent in a quick email this morning about, she's got a bunch of inspections to do today. She's not available. And I can forward that to you, Doug, if you need it. I don't think she sent it to you. Do you need it for your minutes?
Not necessarily, Mr. Chairman. I can just...
And Skip is the same way. Skip is meeting a potential future client today, and he's unable to attend it. Doesn't look like Melissa's here, so we'll go right on down to human resources. Pat. Good morning.
Working right through that agenda, aren't you?
Bada bing bada boom.
Yeah, I guess. So I don't really have a lot to report. I have one more scheduled respectful workplace refresh... I have, uh, one more scheduled, um, respectful workplace refresh with the road department tomorrow morning at 7:45 again. And then I'll be done. I have like five people that are primarily in the sheriff's off, well, they are all in the sheriff's office that have missed. I'm gonna have to figure out what to do with them. Um, other than that, those are all done. We are doing the benefits fair virtual again this year. I had some of the vendors that weren't comfortable coming up and meeting in person. So I thought, well, let's just do it virtual this year. I've reached out to, um, Cascade Medical Center for, uh, flu shots, but I have not gotten back, they haven't gotten back to me, so I can schedule some. So that's in process. And I think, uh, still just recruiting, we did full, we did fill the court clerk position, uh, driver's license position, um, the planning position, obviously with Jody, um, the recreation planner, and everything else, dispatched, detention. Um, they're all still in small grooming, so, and keep moving.
Are we still on tomorrow at 10:00 supervisor training?
Yes. Is that tomorrow?
I thought so.
Oh, shoot, yes, that is tomorrow.
Well, if it is, just let me know, please.
No, I'm sure it is. I just remembered I was gonna do something and forgot, so. In relation to that. So, any questions?
Can't think of any questions.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, Jeremy.
Morning, sir.
Morning, chairman commissioners. Um, I don't have a lot this morning either. Um, we did interview one person so far in position, and, uh, looking at a couple more. Waiting on Oki, I know he's got it on his plate, to look over those Verizon contracts, we can get that going. And, uh, reached out again to the U of I today, 'cause I haven't heard anything back on whether they're willing to talk share with us or not. So still working that, but...
Did we ever come up with a solid figure on that, 370 or something like that? I think the last I remember you said it was around...
Yeah, that was, that was the lowest, that was the lowest quoted. Once we figure out who's gonna help or not help, then we can decide what, um, speed we wanna go with. That 374 or whatever was a 50 over 50, and then the 100 over 100 was like, I think it went up to four or five something a month for that.
Um, do you want some help with that? I can get hold of Dr. Mollmont and see if he can commit, or do you want me to just let that roll?
Um, I'll send an email, see what happens. But if you have a contact down there that you work with for the annual contract or whatever, if you wanna help out.
Do you remember the other gal that was part of that? I don't know if I have her. Well, let's just kinda keep poking at it, see what, what you get back. We'll be in touch and go from there. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask, 'cause I get a lot of stuff about security for your computers in your counties. Do you want me to forward that stuff to you, or am I just...
Um, it depends. I mean, you can forward it to me, and if it gets to be too much, then I can... Maybe I'm getting some of the same stuff.
Probably are. I always look to see if they send it to you, and if they didn't, then I'll just forward it to you, and then I can get rid of the emails, so. I didn't know if you wanted, okay.
Where are we at on the road department software?
So we're gonna do a quick, um, refresher demo on the, on fix on, it's either tomorrow or Wednesday. And if they're still, um, on, if that's the still one that they like, then we'll pull the trigger as soon after that as they can get going.
A road advisory group meeting, and they're gonna want to know what we're doing, so.
Yep, I'll know by at least, uh, Wednesday at the latest.
You let me know when you know.
Yes, absolutely.
Hey, any more questions for Jeremy? All right, thank you. Have a great day.
Thanks.
Cinda. Good morning.
Morning. Um, very excited to have Jody joining us. Um, working with Johanna on that. She's gonna take a couple of classes, actually while she's still over at the treasurer's office. One's on, uh, short-term rentals, and then the other one's on, um, avoiding conflicts in the field or something like that.
Very good class.
Right. Run fast.
Or have somebody slower that's gonna take the hit.
So I think she's up to it. We're, we're very excited about it.
Jody will be great at that job.
She'll be wonderful.
For her.
Yes, I'm excited for my office. And I've been telling her that for three or four years. So anyway, it finally worked. So have you got everything cleaned out back there?
And you'll have a place for her and...
We have a place. We have a place. Um, we'll need a computer, but Jeremy's aware of that. But we don't, she probably won't be there till the middle of January.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't try and see if Scott has time to do some construction in there before she gets there.
It's, uh, yeah.
We probably need to have that conversation with Scott when he comes in.
Um, Ray Cooper resigned. So I'm advertising again for another planning and zoning commissioner. Been here a number of years.
Who will be your lead since now you've lost your...
Um, well, Ray had just been elected in October. I'm anticipating Neil Will. Will Thompson. But we'll see what the planning and zoning commission does. We have a very busy November and December agenda. I don't know if you look at our gen, our agendas.
I do. I look at your minutes, everything.
I think we've got 11 things on there for December. November, we're also going to be, we're gonna come in a half hour early when we're meeting with fire chiefs. Fire chiefs are gonna try to come up with, um, consistent compliance in things like size of fire tray, tanks, and, um, widths of shared driveways. And so everybody throughout the county is, you know, getting the same message. But they're gonna talk about these things with the planning and zoning commission. So we're meeting at 5:30 Wednesday.
You're doing a work session, Cinda, on subdivision processing in the future land use map? I thought we were all gonna meet together on the future land use map.
Well, we will. We will, but right now, PNC commission thought it was very important that they, um, do what they said they were going to do when they recommended approval of the subdivision regulation change to the board of county commissioners, 'cause they said that they would have a work session on the subdivision processes. And they've scheduled that for November 18th, you know, because the crowd thought that, you know, that they would just delay it and, and never actually get to it. So the PNC was very adamant that we do have a work session on that. So we're having a meeting Wednesday, we're having a meeting the 18th.
So my other question, there was, there was concern raised in the legal department about our process, whereas if a subdivision is approved by all members of the PNC, it doesn't come in front of the commission for approval. We just sign it.
Well, it does come to you for approval, for final plot approval.
But with, well, final plot approval, but without another public hearing. So there were some concerns there based on the airport, um, subdivision that was approved. So I don't know if you guys wanna discuss that, or if we need to discuss that. What do you guys feel about that?
Well, I think we need to have...
Concerns legally about that.
Something within the 10-day process after the approval, that we get a chance at least to look at what you guys did. And it's probably something we need to do, you know, do the effort to get in there to see what kind of conditions of approval. But after that 10-day process, appeal is done. There's no way we can...
Yeah, there's a, there's a 10-day appeal process that is lined out in our ordinances.
We're not seeing the final until it's months later or even years later.
Right.
And so we need to figure out a way to insert ourselves into that process somewhere to see if...
Well, there's two different things you could do. You could take away CUP power from the PNC commission, and you look at everything, or you can get rid of the planning and zoning commission. I mean, there's different ways to do that.
I think that's on the far end of the spectrum. I mean, I think removing, if it's a, if it's a, um, well, what it, approved by all, you know, that it takes away... I didn't know, thank you, I was trying to find that word. Unanimous approval. We could take that out and then still allow a public hearing for the, the commission. 'Cause if it's, if it's a split vote, we hear it for public process, correct?
Only on a variance. So do you want to...
Only on a variance?
Yeah, that's something totally different. Do you want to review all CUPs at this level?
You know, the, the thing I'm concerned, man, it's, is, is the airport issue is, and even though you did a good job, and you notified the airport, they had a chance to weigh in on that CUP. There's still a process where we don't get to see that until it's too late for really us to even appeal it if we don't like it. Does that make sense?
They actually went through two different public hearings. We did hear from the airport. It's just that the people that you heard from after the fact didn't want to have to appeal it.
And that was part of the $1,000 appeal cost that we had talked about in one of the meetings about maybe that's too high.
If you want to change your fee, we can do that.
Well, that may be something that we wanna put on this agenda to talk about with PNCs. I would like to know how they feel about it, too, because I think at one time we were too low and it was too easy. Does that make sense? But, but I think there's some happy ground there we gotta get to, because that's the thing I've heard, is that I'm not gonna spend $1,000 to appeal something. It's just too much money.
I've heard the same thing.
From a group of people. I mean, that was a, a group on the airport thing. I mean, I, I think that that was an anomaly. I don't think that that's ordinary.
I just wanna make sure there's a legal process there, so.
And, and there is, there's the appeal process. I mean, it went through two public hearings. You know, we heard it one month, and then they tabled it to the next month, reopened everything again. It's special efforts to hear from the McCall Airport.
And I, and I agree with you. I think that we did go through the, all the proper channels with that approval. Just people did not want to appeal it and take it from there. I just wanna make sure that legally, we, we don't do anything that, um, you know, that our legal counsel has concerns with and regarding that. So you may just run that by Brian as a subdivision process, you know, that, make sure that he's in agreement of what we're doing.
I think we need to have another kind of a work session with us and PNC and with legal there to kinda have this discussion again. 'Cause since we had the last one, there's some things that have come up, and I'm not trying to get, you know, I'm not after anybody. I just think it, it improves the communication with everybody to kinda understand where all coming from.
But other things have come up.
Um, we feel, Brian feels like we need to have the final, final on all this stuff, other than just a final plot, because by the time we get the final plot, it's, it's been built, it's pretty well done, really.
So see, he wants you to have approval of all subdivisions. So you want to have a hearing on all subdivisions.
Well, I don't know if we wanna have a hearing, we just wanna be involved before there's any changes that we could make to it, before that appeal process is up. Does that make sense?
Well, I've, I've had this discussion. PNC's looking at land use. Things like roads and other off-site improvements will come to the board of county commissioners. We just haven't had any subdivisions like that.
And I think that's where my biggest concern is, is that we directed the road department to be involved in those CUPs on subdivisions, so that they can, I mean, say, hey, the road leading to that development needs improvements, and, and get them more involved in that process. And before, we didn't, we didn't have that very good at all, and that's where I think we need to...
We've always had that.
But they never showed.
Huh?
The road department wouldn't show or wouldn't comment.
For the past 12 years, we haven't had that many subdivisions. It's just that we've started processing subdivisions again.
And when's it, when was the last PUD? Was that Tamarack?
Hmm, the Meadows.
Oh, the Meadows, sure.
There's Tamarack, Jug Mountain, and the Meadows.
Well, we'll talk about it some more with Brian, and figure out kind of a process, and maybe we can all sit down and have another work session.
Yeah, I mean, we can make, we can bring everything to you.
The future land use map is more...
More people, 'cause I'll have to double process everything.
The future land use map is where I'm a little bit, you know, I, I, I think that we feel like we should be a little more engaged in that process. So if you guys bring us a future land use map, you've done all of this work without any input from us, and then we're just supposed to put a rubber stamp on it or approve it?
No, 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 that's not how it works.
Okay, tell me how it works.
When we get there, you guys have asked to be involved in, in that conversation. The 18th is the subdivision process, and if we get some time, we'll have a preliminary discussion about the future land use map. Typically, Idaho Code has it laid out that the planning and zoning commission has public hearings and listens to the public and derives that future land use map, and they make a recommendation to the board of county commissioners. But you guys have asked to be part of, you know, starting the conversation. So you flipped the Idaho process. So I guess we'll have work sessions where you have your input into what you want the planning and zoning commission to do, and then they'll have a public hearing, and then they'll recommend it to you.
And if we can just do maybe a, a joint meeting. I mean, there's, this conversation is a very large conversation for the county. Should involve as much of the public as possible. And I, I think having a joint meeting, a joint public hearing would be a good thing to do. Just get an initial conversation from the community and see how they're feeling and...
Yeah, but it wouldn't be really a public hearing, it would be just a work session, right?
Yeah, we, we can do that. It's not typically how it's done, but we can do it.
I think it's good just to build a communication between everybody, keep the lines open. And while I'm on that discussion, I did get ahold of Annette last week, Spicard, Spicard at McCall, to find out the cost to hire Elaine Clay, 'cause I think their contractor's up with her. And I wanted to ask you guys, you four, three especially, if you guys would like to continue with those regional meetings with the cities and like we just got done with. Um, but the county would might be on the bill or on the, on, have to pay that bill. And she's gonna give me that information from Elaine and what something like that would cost. But before I proceed, I wanna see how you guys feel about it, 'cause I thought it was great.
And I spoke with Bob Giles on Friday, and we both said, no, we're not done. And Bob was, he said, we will be the ones that also help do this. So I think maybe staff spoke without talking to the council, 'cause Bob is adamant that they want to engage still, too.
And I think possibly Cascade and Dolly might help pay some of it, too, as well.
I think it should be a joint effort.
It was very fruitful, it was a good conversation that we all had. And I would like to continue, but I wanna get your guys' blessing, too, before we...
Absolutely.
I'm all, all in. I, I do, do you think we should engage the other communities, though, to help contribute?
Cinda, how do you feel about it?
I'm whatever you want to do. I don't know that I have it in my budget, but...
No, you would probably have to, it's kind of a new expense, so we'd have to find the money. But I can work with Cascade, maybe somebody could work with Susan Adonley and see how they feel. And, and whether we do them quarterly or semi-annually, I don't know that schedule yet, but kinda depends on the cost. But I, I think it was awesome. We needed to continue.
I think quarterly would be good, especially to start. Gives you a little time to work on things, but not enough time where you forgot what you just worked on.
Hey, in, anything else?
Yeah.
You got quite a bit, don't you?
I, have, have I brought up anything yet? Ray did resign, so I'm looking for that, that fifth person. So I'll, I'll tell him to anticipate two or three extra meetings a month.
Probably at least two a month.
Um. Are you busy? Special meetings, okay. I participate in the Valley Soil Water Conservation District meetings the first, um, Thursday of every month, and tell them what's on our agenda and go through the items with them. I did bring up that we already have a site planning, I think, Dave, I had talked to you about this. I just want to remind people that this was developed by, uh, DEQ back in 1997. It tells you how to do stormwater management. And we do have a number of these on hand. Pretty good. It's cartoonish, because, you know, we didn't have the technology that we have now. Been working with the building department on some co-changes she wants about treehouses and other natural structures. Kinda wrote that up, sent it to Oki. The other portion of this is removing a couple of the taxing categories from the ag exemption for buildings. And just making it the categories one through five instead of the, including six and seven, which is timber production.
What's the last one? Timber and what else?
It, there are two timber categories.
Cork glass and... Cork glass and commercial?
No, they're, six and seven are like productive timber and, just some, I'm, I'm not sure what the category is. I didn't bring it with me. There are two timber categories though, six and seven.
I'll, I'll come in and talk to you later about that. See, because I think, you know, I know there's also an income, part of to be in order to be ag, isn't there? There used to be a thousand dollars a year or something like.
I, I think that might be on the one through five. I don't think the, category six and seven have to have an income level. I think they just have to, have a timber, a forest plan.
Yeah.
I know that sometimes they plant trees.
Yeah.
Not a tree farm, but they just plant, they have to maintain a certain number of trees on their property and then they get that classification.
And isn't there a minimum acreage for a tree farm in that as well?
It's not a tree farm. It's, it's just a, a tree farm would probably fall under one of the other categories.
So this is for, so the reason to do this is to eliminate if somebody has five acres with some timber on it, that they apply for a large outbuilding, get it for ag use. And really they don't have enough agricultural purpose there in the timber to make that function. Is that the reason? I can't remember what the reason is to.
The reason we're, we're talking about this. Because we thought we had taken care of the issue with our last, code amendment, which required them to, be designed and constructed to house farm implements, hay, grain, poultry, livestock and other horticulture products. And but we left the category one through seven in there. So they're arguing that since six and seven is timber, then, you know, silviculture and that, that also complies. We're trying to avoid issuing huge building, you know, building permits for huge, structures that are going to house their ATVs, their UTVs, their RVs, their snowmobiles and everything else when they, it isn't a bona fide agricultural use.
And have you got any kickback? I noticed that you're doing two sawmills, CUPs for two sawmills up here. Or have you already done them? I can't remember the minutes now. Was there any kickback from those folks on having to get a CUP to do a sawmill?
Oh, everybody grumbles. One of them is in the middle of Gold Dust subdivision. He's just got a band saw out there. Then there's Will Smith and, I mean, he's had his for a number of years, but he had to redo it because he'd reached his, his time limit. And I currently have one that hasn't gone through a public hearing process. But I have the application. And nobody has brought up that this should be, you know, automatically approved because I'm cutting trees.
Well, and those mini bandsaw mills, they don't last very long. They kind of come and go because they're not really built to stop enough for, to last a lot of years, but doesn't mean they can't make them stronger.
Will's been going on for quite a while. The one that I have the new application on, it's actually an electric one. It's, it's different than what we've proved before. And I think that was it.
Hey, any more questions for Sinda? All right. Thank you. Have a great day. And we'll move on down. Our next one is Larry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So nice. Look at all the extra time I've got.
Yeah.
It never happens when it comes down to recreation. Uh, let's start out with some of the fun stuff. Signing of the final grants reimbursement form for the new drag. It's unloaded. It's built twice as strong as the old one. I'm really pleased when we got a look at it. It's, it's going to be a good piece of machinery.
How's that at Francie Wallace?
Yes. It's on the ground there. Yeah. That came in all the way from Canada and.
Yay. Was worth the wait?
Absolutely. I was surprised. I, I got multiple calls on it. How the, the original one is built, the beams are two by four. These are all two by six. Everything is double. It's just stronger, better. And I tried to talk him into painting it hot pink, but they wouldn't do it. It's still blue like all the rest of them.
You can paint it any color you want now.
No, we'll leave it the way it is. Just, we just have to put a whole lot of lights on it. We're going to put a bunch of Christmas lights on this one. Make it really light up.
What are you going to do with the old one?
Uh, we're actually going to keep working on it until it's back in fairly good shape. Put it up, upper elevation so that when we get really good weather, we can run it out on some of the long runs out there and use it. Yeah.
I hope you keep it around for.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Did you guys have a smaller one that was up there at upper elevation?
Yeah, we've got the little one up there that we can run. And, and there's, you, you can't take the big drag around the mountain. You couldn't take it down cop it. On good days, you could take it out to Fisher Creek, but other than that, you could never get it to Wallace Lane. But on good days, it'll help us keep those trails in a little better shape. I, I don't know if you've ever noticed, but, the difference between dragging and tilling is monstrous for how long the trail stands up. But you can't drag new snow. You can only drag old snow. How does that sound for scientific? Thank you for signing that.
Oh, you guys. We need, this is an action item, right?
Yes.
Um, one, one more question on that. The two thousand dollars that we're using out of your budget, that's in your.
That came out of thirty-nine at, uh, uh, snowmobile rec.
Okay.
Certificates, yeah.
So I would entertain a motion then to approve, um, the IDPR Valley County Snowmobile grooming drag.
I'll move.
Back it.
Oh, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
Can we say it louder? Yay.
Yeah. It was interesting. Uh, it was a challenge because remember that thing when, when we applied for the drag, it was like thirty-four thousand dollars. By the time we finally got the paperwork from IDPR, it was forty-some thousand dollars. And at the final price, including freight was fifty-one thousand. So we went through the rack grant and, and McCall Snowmobile Club threw in seven thousand dollars and, and we overcame. We could sing a song like that, can't we? Not today.
I have a microphone. Would you like me to go ahead and do?
Yeah. Uh, United Pay, we've had two meetings and I've got another meeting this afternoon at two o'clock. We've been working really hard on the, on the type of lease agreement. And of course my, I've been really watching it to be protective of Valley County. We want it to be very short and concise, but not a lot of detail. So we'll work on that a little more this afternoon.
So Larry, we're signing that agreement.
No, we're sending the.
You guys will sign that agreement.
Got it.
Yeah. Yeah. We're just building it all up and then we'll get it, once we get to a certain point, we'll send it to you guys in the Oki and then, uh, we'll see what happens.
He did send us the lease last week too, or the draft.
Yeah, yeah. Had a meet, really good meeting with DF Development last week. We've come to an agreement also we can groom Red Ridge again. Fisher Creek's another story because they're logging down. They're not them, but the Forest Service. So we're probably not going to be down there this year. But we've added to this Murray Creek, Packer John and Scriber Creek, which is a great achievement. And he is well, that, excuse me, DF is willing to discuss easements and move, moving forward. So we're making great headway.
Awesome.
Um, attended strategic, just strategic planning. Got back late last night from the ISSA convention. Rexburg is such an exciting town. Never mind. Uh, elected a new president. Clint Hanson is the new president of the ISSA. And Scott Chapman is the new president-elect, which I'm really excited about. Going to mentor him on some of the land issue stuff. Uh, our speaker was Scott Bedekey, which was Speaker of the House for Idaho. That was interesting. I, I think we're going to have a, if you're in entertainment, I think that our elections are going to be very entertaining this year to say the least. I'm getting calls. I've got calls from two different outfits that want to run a coffee truck or a food truck down at Francie Wallace, Fresh Creek or, and, and some of those parking lots. And I just verified the final this morning. They cannot do that. Because there cannot be a financial exchange that goes on in the parking lots because it changes the basis of the, of the lease. So I'll let them know that. So if you guys get a call, you'll know what's going on.
Could they reach, uh, could they reach out to ID, I, excuse me, IDL directly and, and apply for a commercial lease?
They didn't, but I did.
Well, could they is what I'm saying is could.
Yeah, sure they could. Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. I, I talked to their, uh, their permit guy today, Mr. King, and he said, nah, not even a chance. But he could, they could still put it down at, um, if they, if we have an agreement with them down at Wellington or, you know, our properties. But, you know, that's not as, as well used. So they probably won't be interested in that. Yeah, you just can't have a, a for-profit entity in there. And as I understand it, Chief Thrill sold, so it'll be kind of interesting to see how that goes.
So, you know, you might direct them to, what is the ground where the lady rents out all the paddle boards right at the top?
It's on State Park.
At State Parks, which is.
I mean, that would be a great drive-through kind of a location right there. Somebody wanted to do something.
Well, I think State Park is actually IDL ground that the State Parks has an agreement with.
Okay.
Yeah. Pretty, I'm pretty sure that's, yeah, I know, I know. Well, things are progressing. Who knows? Next couple of years, we don't know what's going to happen. We've got a lot of work to do, uh, whether we have a land exchange or move past this, um, uh, land use permit. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that can happen. We've changed a lot amazingly in the last eight years. I'm pretty excited about that part of it. A lot more control.
Three that DF are willing to do. Murray Creek?
Murray Creek, Packer John, Scriber Creek and Red Ridge. And the interesting thing about Scriber is that's, there's the Grimmer Garage in Garden Valley is, is actually parked on, um, just off of, of DF Development land. And to get across DF Development to the groomed trail, they've got to go on this closed area. So we've got that agreement. And keep in mind, they groom, um, uh, the plunge area, which is part of Valley County. So I, I was really glad to see that. That was a real roadblock in the past. We, we're past that. And hopefully it'll, this will all be IDPR's issue from now on. We'll have, have it with them. And I did talk to Colin a little bit about the potential of, of declaring RS two, four, seven, seven on, um, the old Cabarton Road. And he suggested, which was amazing, that we do that on Murray Creek. Cause he says that's pretty clear.
Where is the Murray Creek Road?
Uh, down on Smith Ferry.
It's clear down at the end before you start up Packer John, Murray Creek subdivision above.
Oh, right. Okay.
That's been, that's been a controversy for a long time.
It was what, three quarters of a mile that was DF that they gave it off? And now they're opening that back up. What's really cool, I think, is that Boise County Club can now groom clear to Packer John. And we can come from our side and have another loop system, correct?
Correct.
That's what I was going to ask. Is there a way to connect those two things?
It's going to open up a whole bunch more down.
Yeah, we, we used to always connect at the lookout on top. And then we would come back across to, um, um, Clear Creek to the lookout there and drop down to where our parking lot is. And we lost all that. But now, and, and we had that discussion too. And he said this summer, we can go in there and relook. The, the tough part of a lot of that old trail is the roads when they log, they tend to move roads. And so what's really on the GIS isn't quite where it is. So we're going to redo that whole section and get it going. And hopefully, uh, with the new cost of tags, as long as everybody gets them, we'll have enough funds of where we can add grooming. Right now, we really can't add miles because we do everything we can with what we have and adding miles costs a lot of money.
So in saying that, are they changing, how are they, how are we going to make sure people get them this year? Is it going to be an easier process? Do you think people understand it more or is it enforcement on our end?
So there's a couple of things going on. Actually, it's a lot easier. Joel from IDPR showed up and we, they took off, you don't have to have a VIN number. There's a lot of things you don't have to do. It's really quick and easy to go online. Uh, we've added a couple, vendors have, a lot of vendors dropped away from it. We're trying to get, in fact, I talked to the owner of Cascade Hardware this morning and they're interested in. And when it really comes down to it, it's enforcement. There is a lot of discussion about enforcement. And it's really convoluted how you do it. Some areas do it differently. You know, we're just going to have to have that discussion.
Well, I think that's a goal that we need to work on with the Sheriff's Department and with some other folks too, is to kind of build that foundation and get started.
And Kevin called me and said he's going to start being at all the advisory board meetings so we can get that line of communication going too.
You know where we are as far as the Snow Ranger program with the Forest Service right now? They got a grant, I believe.
As far as what? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll speak up. I forgot. Yeah. I just wondered, where are we with the Snow Ranger program for this year through the Forest Service?
I don't think they got a grant this year.
Thought they got a grant for that.
And so you ask, you know, I've, I've actually got a, a meeting with Sarah tomorrow and we're going to go over the whole thing. Which I really appreciate her taking the time because it's going to take a couple of hours to go over everything. We're also going to discuss Titus and, and Wallace Lane.
So I think the difference was is they had the two part-time guys at them call, but that would have taken them, the grant that they applied for would have taken them to full-time status.
We'll see.
That would be a huge help for enforcement.
It'd be monstrous. Uh, the, uh, a lot of comments were made about, um, OHV tags for, for the motorcycles and UTVs and, and said there wasn't any enforcement on that this year. Not that there wasn't people out there checking them when they're drinking or something like, but nobody was checking that they had their tags. And so, you know, that's how we get money to maintain the trail systems.
So the rack, is there anything in those rack grants that you can actually apply to fund a position like that?
We've asked that to try to quote, clarify that.
Yeah.
And I talked to Kathy Muir about, because in the past, there's been a, a little bit, it's been controversial a little bit about getting money or enforcement out of IDPR grants, but she thinks that's changed. So we're going to look at that too, to see if we can get the sheriff's office, if that's what they would like, uh, another position and funded through grants. But we've got to have that legal answer first. And there's going to, we're hoping there's going to be more rack money. You know, they're saying there is. We'll see.
Larry, who's ahead of IDPR now? Who's finally in that?
Susan Buckstrom.
She's still there?
Yes, she is. She's the leader. And remember Troy Elmore? So Troy Elmore is the number two now, which is pretty awesome. He's a great communicator. And we still got Dave Clakem, uh, head of the, um, recreation side. And Mike Robinson has stepped up and take Troy's spot.
And then next question is where are we on the CUP for Clear Creek?
Well, should apply for it here fairly quickly.
Design, we're, we're.
Yeah, design's there and Kathy Muir actually got ahold of Mary and she wants a tour of that property, I think on the seventeenth. So she can see.
Okay.
What it is. So we're moving forward on it all. It's just, these things take time. We don't have a lot, but we, it takes time.
Hey, any more questions for Larry? Sounds like you're busy.
Yeah. Danny's heading to Mountain Home tomorrow with Jeff to pick up the truck. So everything's moving forward.
All right. Good deal.
One step at a time. Thank you. Have a great day.
You too. Hey, we've got about twenty-three minutes before we can get to Scott. Can I go now, Doug? It's up to Doug. It's his call.
Mr. Chairman, no, you have to wait.
I said every time.
I was going to say, you ask this every week. In effort to move things forward.
So we'll recess and be back here at ten-thirty for next agenda.